Hello, everyone, and welcome to the October 7th Select Board meeting. Please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just wanted to say that this meeting is being recorded by our local cable studio. ECAT is broadcast live and is available upon demand. And just ask the board members to introduce themselves from the showroom floor.
Jennifer Stacey.
I'm Dottey Fullgenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And Select Board Member Mark Lamb is not able to be here tonight, so we'll note that for the minutes. We have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heg. This meeting is also being broadcast on Zoom, so we will have Sean watching the Zoom box. If people have questions, and you're watching at home, Q and A, and we will ask the questions. Before we get started, I just want to make a short statement. It's with great sadness to let people know that last week, Easton suffered a tragedy with the passing of Easton Department of Public Works employee, Mark DiCudo. Mark passed away unexpectedly Thursday morning after collapsing while on duty. He was an Easton resident who proudly served his community for the past 21 years with the DPW. We thank Easton Police and Fire for their heroic efforts to save a longtime colleague, fellow public servant, neighbor, and friend, and we mourn with Easton, the DPW, who lost a brother. Please keep Mark's family and your loved ones in your thoughts as they go through this difficult time. And I'd ask the board and anyone with us to join us in a moment of silence for Mark and his family. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is recognition of Easton's receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Award. It's called, otherwise known as the GFOA Award. Finance Director Wendy Knightengale is here to talk to us about it. Hi, Wendy.
Hi. So we've received the Distinguished Budget Award now for several years. I think the first year might have been 2020. Due to COVID, we had to skip a year, but then we've been consistently submitting since then. This year, we actually got special recognition for performance measures in the budget document. So that was really great to get that notification. In order to receive this budget award, you have to satisfy some nationally recognized guidelines that show that you have an effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well your document serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, a communications device. It goes through three separate reviewers, and you're graded on several categories. There's different groups and different criteria. You have to submit the report and show where your document meets that criteria so that it's easier for them to review it. And you have to get at least a proficient category by each of the reviewers in order to qualify and get the award. So really excited that we got it again. And every year, we try to make the document better. We try to improve it. We try to improve the performance measures. And this year, it got us over that line, and we got that special recognition for that. And I also want to thank a lot of the departments for being cooperative and getting that information. It's a lot of work that goes into putting that budget document together, but it's a great tool. I find myself even looking online, if I need to look something up, I'll go to the document online rather than look it up in my office. So it's a great resource, and a lot of work goes into putting that together and making it easy to navigate and find the information in there. So I want to thank all the departments for their cooperation in getting it all together.
That's great news. Jamie, do you have any?
I do, because you're making it so like almost habit that you achieve these high levels every year. And to have changed, moved the bar on yourself, right? Created these additional metrics that are now being recognized, that just is unbelievable. And I think what you do for this community and the way we're nationally recognized for that work too, because I think this is the most important part that is very difficult from a transparency standpoint. It's what a lot of communities get dinged on for not being as transparent with their finances. And you've done an amazing job, not just raising the level for our own community, but nationally, for communities all around the country, and the team. I'm not saying, I'm saying, "Thank you." Please share with the entire team, Wendy, but fantastic.
Thank you.
It's just a testament to what we already knew, that this team is doing fantastic work when it comes to fiscal responsibility and reporting the information and the right level of transparency. And from a communication standpoint, it makes things feel easy, but so much work goes into everything, this fine package that comes out of the end. So much work goes into that. And I think hats off to everyone involved, because it's really a true team effort. But I think it really pays back, no pun intended, significantly in terms of the ability to use this and share information and make people feel more engaged. So thank you. Congratulations.
I think the most important thing for me is the transparency for the members of the community, that it is available so that they understand everything's right there. There's nothing hidden. It's right up front. And I know how hard you work, and I very much appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you.
And just for people at home to know that if you go into this budget book, it starts with just some fun, quick facts about the town. What's our tax rate? What's our population? Some things like that. Also, one of the things that I love is the org chart, because I'm surprised at how many people don't really know how operationally things work and who reports to who and how that works, and that the Select Board doesn't work here as a full-time job in Town Hall during the day. And then each department talks about what did they do with the taxpayer dollar last year, and what do they want to do with it this year? And it really paints a picture, looking at just, I mean, I know a lot of people love spreadsheets and numbers, but looking at just that to tell the story about the town is really not the complete picture. So I'd really recommend that people look at this, pick a chapter, just read the first page. You don't even have to look at all the numbers. But then if you want to look at the numbers, everybody's mentioned transparency. It is so transparent. We basically would never have to answer any question, just refer people back to the budget book, because everything that you could possibly want to know about the town is in there. And Easton's always been transparent, but to see it in a book like that and to get that recognition, it is really hard, and the award is very well deserved, so thank you so much. It's got to be hard, because you set the bar high, and then you have to follow it every year.
Well, I want to thank you, Dottey, too, because really, years ago, you sort of gave us a little push to strive for this. And every year, we made the budget more detailed and better until we got to a point where we could submit it. So you really were the starting point for that, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Terrific.
Dottey, if I could just add to that, I also want to say thank you to Wendy for her work here. I think it's in the notes, but no one touched on it, that this is a national award. There are tens of thousands of local governments eligible for this, certainly don't all achieve it, but only 35 cities and towns in the entire United States in the past two years achieved a special recognition on performance metrics, which is something that I think is particularly noteworthy. And I also think it's really important that we reflect on this as we are, because building an organizational budget, $110 million budget, is a lot of work, even when you're not using a best practice format like this. It does take additional time and effort. Wendy does a great job. I think it's worth it. But I'd be remiss not to point out, I think one of your staff size is the same as it was in the '90s.
Right.
Right.
So three people. And while we're going through the process with promoting a sustainable Easton, after some challenging and increasingly tight budget years as our margins get narrower, and folks understandably are looking inward and saying, "Are we doing things as effectively and as efficiently as we ought to be getting national peer recognition?" While not staffing up for a generation speaks to the testament of equality of people we have here and the thoroughness of their work. So I want to say thank you to Wendy and the team.
I appreciate you pointing that out. It's important.
Excellent point.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by the Town Clerk, Danielle Sicard. Know before you go, voting options for presidential election scheduled for November 5th, 2024. Hi, Danielle.
Hi, Danielle.
I see all the big boxes in your office. We know it's election time.
We have a lot going on, for sure. Thanks for your time. And for those at home, I'm hoping that my presentation gives them some information and answers some questions. We certainly have had ringing phones and lots of emails in the last few weeks, and we've done our best to really put a lot of information out there on how voters can actually look up all of this information on their own, too. So the first thing I want to tell everybody is, right now, it's time to make a plan. What is it? How are you going to vote? There's many options and different ways to vote, and that's really personal to each voter. So we do have some materials and information that I'd recommend, starting off with our Voter Option Guide. So I'm going to give you three links, and these three links will give you all the information that any voter would need to be able to find. The first one is our webpage, so that's www.easton MA.us/vote. That'll bring you to the page that has a link there that you can click on for every single thing that I'm going to talk about. I also would recommend that voters are taking the time to check their voter status. Take a look now. Are you a registered voter? What's your precinct? Are you an inactive voter? Those types of things. The time to do that is well before we get to the voter registration deadline. So right now, I'd recommend everybody to go to www.votema.com, and they can find all of the information relative to their voter status. There's a link there to make changes to their addresses, changes to their names, changes to their communities, and register to vote if they need to from that link. And then also the Voter Option Guide that I just mentioned, that is www.easton MA.us/voteroptionguide.pdf. That is a five-page document that will have absolutely everything that you would need to know about the three different voter options that we have. So I'm going to go through a little of those voter options. Residents can vote by mail, and I'm really excited to announce that tomorrow, we hope the post office is picking up 5,600 ballot packets that are ready to go into the mail. Those are the ones who have already applied as of October 3rd. So just a little background on that, we have had a lot of calls, so I really want to just take a little time to talk about it. There is a Track My Ballot app for the vote by mail. And so I would recommend that those who decide that they want to vote by mail, that they often look at this Track My Ballot app, and I'll give you that information in just a few minutes. It will tell you when we've received your application. It'll tell you when we've mailed out your ballot, and it will tell you when we've received your ballot back. It also will provide you with all of the information that you need to know about where we're at in the process of your ballot. And so tomorrow, after the post office picks up, we will scan all of those in, and voters will be able to see that their ballot is on the way. So that's wwwtrackmyballotMA.com. Check it often, as opposed to sending us an email and asking where your ballot is, because it's very personalized, and you can check it on your time. So vote by mail is obviously very popular. We'll see how many we get back, but we're excited about already having the level of returns and applications that we have. The deadline to apply for that is 5:00 PM on October 29th. So we still have quite a few weeks left ahead of us where people can apply. And so I can't stress this enough, with voting by mail, that time is of the essence. If that's the choice that you want to make, and that's the way you want to vote, get that application in as soon as you possibly can. The post office is doing their best to get them out as fast as they can. But sometimes that can take up to seven to 11 days if it goes to the processing center in Brockton, both ways. So the earlier that voters apply, the better off they are. The Voter Option Guide will also have information about how to mark your ballot, how to return your ballot, where's the secure drop box, and a checklist of things that you have to do so that your ballot isn't rejected. A signature on a vote by mail is required on the outside of that envelope. We will have to reject any ballots that don't have signatures on it, so that checklist becomes pretty important. We also have voting early in person, and that will be for two weeks for this election. So that starts on October 19th, and will run until Friday, November 1st. The two Saturdays are from 9:00 in the morning until 3:00 PM. The first week is not full-time, it's half-days. So Monday is from 3:00 to 7:00. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays from 9:00 to 1:00, and Friday is 8:30 to 12:30, whereas the second week are full hours of operation. So all the time that we're open, early voting in person will be held in this room here. So there's also voting on Election Day. Kind of seems by the time we get through all of that that we have the fewer amount of people who are participating on that. But traditionally, we do have a great number, I expect over 6,000, that will come on Election Day as well. So the early voting in person, it is on the 5th of, Election Day voting, excuse me, Tuesday, the 5th of November. It's at Oliver Ames High School, and will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And if you choose to vote that way, it is recommended that you know what your precinct is. Either do that in advance, again, in the Voter Option Guide, or on the way into the polls, there'll be some boards that are standing there with QR codes that you can find your precinct as well. There's also a Know Before You Go flyer that's on our webpage that provides a map and lots of other information about the things that you might need to know before coming to vote on Election Day. And then finally, just about being educated. The most important thing is for voters, whichever way you decide to vote, that you take the time to find out what's on the ballot. You can take a look at our sample ballots. Those are already on our website. You can also find in the Voter Option Guide the link to the questions and the voter red book that everybody should have already received in their mailboxes. We also have some additional ones here at Town Hall for anybody who might need them. And then, as I mentioned, that link in order to check your voter status is a pretty important one to do at this time. And then finally, the voter registration deadline is Saturday, October 26th. We will be here from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM that day for people who want to walk in in person, but the online portal for that is also open until just before midnight on that night. So that's what I have as far as what we can expect in this next election cycle, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I was just going to say, very thorough, and it's great having all the options that we have. And you're right, having you here now gives people plenty of time to be prepared. So thank you very much, Danielle.
You're welcome.
I have no questions, but I want to thank you and all of your staff, who I know are working crazy hours right now, and all the poll workers who'll be helping with this really important thing, so.
Yeah, I'm really proud of our team and the workers that have put together those 5,600 ballot packets. We just received our ballots last Tuesday or Wednesday, and so in a very short turnaround, they've put together over 5,600 packets. So yeah, busy hands. Thank you.
I'm always impressed with the work that you and you people do. And I was very pleased to be able to see the packages getting ready to go out this evening. So 5,600 is a lot of ballots.
It's hard to walk in my office. I'll be happy tomorrow when the postman comes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Danielle.
So what I'm hearing is there's absolutely no excuse not to vote, right? So I'm very excited about that. And also just want to think about how lucky we are to live in an area where it's safe to vote. I think sometimes I take that for granted, and then I hear about all the stories of other people really fighting with their lives for the right to vote. So not to be too dramatic, but I think we should really reflect on the fact that it's organized, it's safe, you've done, you and your staff, everything to let people know how to vote, fully transparent, again, with the same staff that you had before. We had all this early voting, all the extra things that come along with it. And the poll workers, that is such a long day, and those people are smiling and excited to be there. It's fun. I like voting on Election Day when I can, if I'm in town.
I do, too.
And it's a big day for everyone. So thank you so much for bringing all this information to us. And we will see you on November 5th, lots of days before that.
Yep, absolutely.
Terrific.
Am I still sitting here?
Yes, you are.
I think you're a very nice item.
I was like, think I'm continuing to stay. Okay, great.
All right. So next, we have, is this past 6:05? The vote for a public hearing. Craig, if you want to read the public hearing.
Sure. In accordance with Chapter 44 of the Easton Town Code, the Easton Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Board Room, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:05 PM. The hearing will include a discussion and determination as to whether the 2025 Annual Town Election should be rescheduled, provided it is not before April 15th and not later than April 30th of 2025. Interested residents will have the opportunity to present either oral or written information on their views. Those wishing further information may contact the Select Board's office. Those who cannot attend and wish to submit written testimony for the record may do so by sending an email with the subject "Public Hearing: Annual Town Election" to eHAG@easton MA.us. If testimony is not received by 10:00 AM the day of the hearing, the board may not have sufficient time to consider it.
All right. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Did you have anything that you want to add to that?
I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. We've been doing this for five years now. I did provide a memo for your packet, which explains the bylaw, the change, the public hearing requirement, and the process that we've continued to go through for the last five years, discussing this with both the DPW and the schools and looking for the most appropriate date to offer.
But that date has to be within a very small window. So it essentially turns out that we either have to have it during the week, or we have to have it the Saturday at the beginning of April vacation, or the Saturday at the end of April vacation for school security reasons. To me, it's very important not to disrupt the school day with bringing a bunch of strangers in to vote when you don't have to do that. And I think that we just, there's, again, plenty of options. If you're going to be away, that you can request a ballot, you can vote. We just need to make sure that people know how to do that. It's also a very important election. The town local elections are the ones where the people are going to make the biggest difference in your day-to-day in your town. So it's a responsibility for people to get out there and vote. And if you know you're going to be on vacation that week, you can do it at the beginning, the end, or by mail, right?
Yeah, you can vote by mail. You can vote absentee if you're going to be out for the week and do that in person at the office as well, yes.
Awesome.
Is there any early voting, or not? There's no early voting.
Not early voting for local elections, correct.
Any questions?
I would just say that I know it comes up, because a lot of families do take vacation, and whether it's the Saturday before or the Saturday after. I agree, having other options and ways to vote in advance is great. But letting people know, and you just said it, Dottey, that it's a tight window that we had to schedule it anyway, which is why that happens, because everyone's always like, "But why?" And that's the reason. It's a tight window. If we're going to pick a Saturday, it ends up being one of those, too. And it is what it is. I think it benefits a lot of people, too, being on a Saturday.
I agree.
I go back and forth on it, because there are elements of it that I liked about it being during the week, but I also really, really understand the constraints at places for the school having it there midweek. When you go to the school and it's during some of the crazy times, which often coincides with people going to vote, it can be really dangerous in the parking lots, and it can be just challenging logistically. So this shift now puts us at the end of school vacation, as opposed to the past couple have been beginning, correct?
They've all been at the end.
They've all been at the end, okay. My brain is mixing it up, so I support continuing this way as well.
Yeah, I share the concerns that Jen talked about. I've had these discussions for the last few years about wanting to do it during the week as opposed to on a weekend, especially when it's a holiday week. But I concur that it makes the most sense at this point, so.
Excellent. All right. So we need a vote on this, Craig?
I move to have the Annual Town Election on Saturday, April 26th, 2025, at Oliver Ames High School, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much for being here.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to skip ahead a little bit, because we have a couple of timed items. So we are going to go to the application for a change of manager for 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant, 99 Belmont Street, Easton, Mass. Come on up. So we have Marcus Jones in our packet. We have more details, but I'm just going to ask you to introduce yourself, Marcus, and tell us a little bit about your change and roles.
Marcus Jones, I've been working for the 99 for almost seven years now. Very excited to be the general manager of Easton 99. I've grown up in Easton, so to be working at my local 99, it's an awesome experience. So I'm very excited.
That's great.
That's great.
We're glad that Easton Person is going to be there and benefiting from that. Any comments or questions from anybody in the packet?
Just a question. You are the manager now, but you're going to become the general manager. Is that?
I'm going to be the general manager, yes.
But are you currently, what's your role currently?
General manager, yeah. Yeah.
Sorry. This is basically a paperwork transaction Pub 99 has to go through occasionally as a corporate, a large chain where they have change of managers. And so this is a relatively common application that comes to the board just for a cursory check before going to be a VCC.
Any comments or questions from you?
No questions. Pretty standard.
All right. So Craig, do you want to make a motion?
I move to accept the application for change of manager at 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant, 99 Belmont Street, Easton, Mass., with Marcus Jones as the general manager.
Second.
So that's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Marcus, good luck in your new role, and we wish you great success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Next, we have a discussion and vote to approve the issuance and other details of the general obligation bonds and the amount of $22,985,000 dated October 17, 2024, and to sign related closing documents. Hello, Linda.
How are we doing?
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. So we're discussing the $22 million bonds that were offered for bid recently. I did provide a memo for the packet, which was fairly brief at the time, because the sale had not happened yet. So to fill you in, we did get eight bids, which was good. I thought that was a good showing. The winning bidder had a total interest cost of 3.68%. And the range was 3.68% to 3.83%, so between the eight people, really close. I was initially a little disappointed with the interest cost. However, looking back over the first, I mean, the last five years' worth of bonds, we're right where we should be. I was a little surprised, actually. We're a little bit higher than last March's bond, but a year and a half ago, we were at 3.63%. So we're really, we're sort of staying stable with the interest rates, which is good, because that's what we're kind of hoping for with this big project coming online with the Public Safety Project, which is the majority of these bonds, $20 million, out of this borrowing is for the Public Safety Complex. So that's ramping up. I expect to come back before you again next March with a significant amount again, because that project is starting to get going. In addition to the $20 million for the Public Safety Building project, there's $2.25 million for the ladder truck, $275,000 for a log truck, and the Five Corners IMA is $460,000 in this borrowing. It's a mid-year borrowing. Our bigger borrowings are normally in March. This is just to keep us going throughout the winter, because I do expect those expenses to start increasing for the Public Safety Building project. Beyond that, part of the vote that will be taken by the chair or will be signed by the chair of the Select Board is, not the chair, I'm sorry, the secretary of the Select Board. Part of that vote is to extend the useful life of two of the items beyond the normal five years. This is, I think, seven years for the log truck and 15 years for the ladder truck. And lastly, because this borrowing does include 30 different bonds, there'll be a lot of documents to sign, so don't be surprised when you see them. There's a lot.
Well, there should be a lot. It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, so, yeah. Yep. The bonds I noticed were in between $500,000 and $1 million each. But even at that, if you've got $20 million that you've got to make up for, $22 million. There's 30 of them.
What's IMA? I'm sorry.
That's the capacity purchase for the Five Corners, right, Wendy?
It's the sewer capacity purchase from the regional plant. That was authorized, I believe, in 2015.
Excellent. And so there's also a note in here about Moody's affirming our AA3 credit rating?
Yep. Thank you for bringing that up, yes. Moody's did reaffirm our double A credit rating, which is very, very good.
It's impressive.
So one of the things that we do anytime we issue bonds, we get a credit rating from Moody's. We've been AA3 for quite some time. We've been working... We've been working through a variety of fiscal policies and through our management to continually strengthen our financial position. So one of the things Moody's notes here is the town's conservative budgetary management, which is supporting positive operations as well as maintenance of healthy reserves and liquidity with manageable fixed costs. I think this is the first time, although I haven't gone back and checked every one of them, where our scorecard indicated rating is actually higher. It's a double A2. We're trending towards a potential upgrade. That's going to be really challenging to keep moving in that direction, given the financial climate we're heading into. But that's nonetheless a really positive indicator for us. And again, I think, you know, thinking about pace and their work and what kind of scrutiny our finances are under, this is further testament to the strong budget management there. I also am going to put Wendy on the spot about the, the building project debt. That's obviously an exempt debt project that voters approved. The way that these bonds are structured, I believe, is such that the payments are not necessarily due until fiscal '26. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we built the capital portfolio for this project, which will be borrowing north of $100 million for these facilities, we had anticipated issuing $20 million of debt in this fiscal year, but with payments being owed in that year. So we're on track with when we are borrowing. However, a few factors are favorable here. One is that total interest cost of 3.68% is lower than what we estimated a year ago at four and a quarter. We then estimated the future years at four and a half because we, no one knew what Fed would be doing a year ago. So hopefully, this, we're no longer in September, but last month's rate cut is indicative of where we're going to be heading. That would be further good news for Easton and for our taxpayers. But we also expected that that first $20 million issuance would be showing up in the tax rate this fall. And so based on the structure of that debt, that'll actually be showing up in fiscal '26. So that pushes some of that back at a lower rate as well. So those are, doesn't make it a cheap project, but every, every inch of progress we could make in those areas are wins that are worth highlighting. So thank you to Wendy and Linda and the team.
That's great. Terrific. All right. Anything else on these?
Just going to do the motion.
Yes.
Craig?
I move to adopt the votes prepared by bond counsel in connection with the town's offering for the $22,985,000 general obligation bonds dated October 17, 2024, and incorporate the text of the vote of the select board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Well, thank you for being here. You always bring us good news.
Thank you.
Because when we're issuing debt, that means we've got some big, exciting projects happening.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. All right, next we have discussion and vote on contract PCD 2025-03 tie-in bond for Wheaton Farm Barn Phase II Design. Connor, do you want to?
Sure, planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I didn't see you for this one.
Director Danielson is certainly more equipped to speak intelligently to this project than I am.
Okay. So before you tonight is a request to vote and sign a contract for $28,000 with tie-in bond. And the funds will be used for a Phase II construction bid and bid documents and estimates for the repair and preservation work for the barn. That work will include siding, roofing, windows, the cupola, and stabilization of the south addition. And this is being funded with CPA administrative funds. Just a little bit of background, I think most of you are pretty aware that Wheaton Farm is nearly 200 years old and it is a rare surviving building that speaks to Easton's agricultural past. And it is also a contributing resource to the Bay Road National Register Historic District. Also, Langwater Farm has a lease agreement with the Conservation Commission to use certain fields at Wheaton Farm, and they will also use the barn once it's in good repair as part of their local farming operation. And they will also help to maintain the barn once it's in good repair. Bids for Phase One, so this is for Phase Two. Phase One, construction work that will include structural stabilization and roofing are due on October 11th, the bids for that work. And those bid documents were also produced under a $28,000 contract with tie-in bond.
Terrific. Any comments or questions from the board? I think that, you know, using CPA money to preserve the barn at first, I'm going to be honest, I was a little bit, you know, surprised that that was something that people were really interested in. But to see that barn, that historic barn preserved and used is the important part to me, you know, to preserve something and just let it sit there is not, you know, the best, the best use of preserving something, but I'm really excited that Langwater is going to be able to use that and that they'll help with the future maintenance as well. So it's a great project and thank you to the town meeting voters that approved that and moved it forward. So I think there was a little bit of trouble getting it going in the beginning, finding the right partners.
Getting, getting someone to respond.
Yeah.
Nowadays with construction work, what it is in companies, trying to find a smaller firm.
Right.
That would do the construction documents.
Yep.
You know, we're looking forward to a productive bid.
So the perseverance is really important in these projects too.
Yes.
So thank you very much for that. Craig, did you?
I move to approve contract PCD 2025-03 tie-in bond Wheaton Farm Barn Phase II Design in the amount of $28,000.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, we can probably squeak one more in here. Discussion and vote on contract DPW 2025-13, Easton Wind Water Bay Road Drainage Pipe.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attached to your packet is a memo from DPW Director Dave Field requesting approval of this contract. It's a $31,512 contract for the purchase and delivery of roughly 1,200, 100 linear feet of drain pipe and fittings for Bay Road in an area where there was a failure of the drain system last fall. So this will be funded through available Chapter 90 funds and he recommends approval and so do I.
Okay, that's great. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Necessary. I move to approve contract DPW 2025-13, Easton Wind Water Bay Road Drainage Pipe in the amount of $31,512.52.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Do we want to try to squeeze one more in or do we want to have Sean set up the presentation?
We could do that. We could, sure, we could certainly take a minute.
Okay. We have, when we have timed items, we have to stop right at that time. So it's 6:38. It'll take Sean a minute or two to set up the presentation and then we'll go right into the 6:40 timed item, which is review of a proposal to purchase town-owned land at 388 Depot Street, otherwise known as the Center School.
I know. What's my password?
No pressure on you, Sean.
No, it's like.
Ignore the room full of people.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm like, what's my password?
Awesome. Still have a moment to go.
Excellent. So we're just going to give it that one minute to start exactly at 6:40, which is usually like the longest minute you have to wait, like watching a pot boil. And if we do have people that have public comment during this, we'll wait till, ask you to wait till the end of the presentation. Make sure you raise your hand so I can see it and we'll call on you and ask you to give your comments. If there's anybody on Zoom at home, Q and A.
So, Dottie, if you're comfortable that it's 6:40, I just wanted to give a brief recap of a procedural history, getting to this project, if Joe was going to just touch on anything I missed on procurement before we invite the proponents up.
Perfect.
So for the board's benefit and folks who are at home or in a room, a reminder of how we got here following the board's votes to issue a request for letters of interest this June and later the issuance of a formal request for proposals in August of this year. The town is in receipt of one proposal for the purchase of 388 Depot Street, a former center school for purposes of redevelopment as an indoor and outdoor soccer and multi-sport complex from Kevin Powers, Pietro Galino, and Peter Galino Jr. The proposal includes the abatement of hazardous materials and demolition of the existing structure. The project proponents are here tonight to present an overview of their proposal to the select board, after which the board may interview them about that proposal. And you have an executive session slated for later in your evening relating to the value of the property. So just some relevant background here. The town went through a process in the 2010s of doing a comprehensive facility, facilities needs assessment project, identifying the current quality and state of repair or disrepair of our public buildings. That included our schools. That was a really critical document that served as the foundation for the town getting invited into the MSBA grant process. So that's the Mass School Building Authority Grant Process. In 2017, at that time, the community was only invited into that really important state grant program for the potential of replacing Center School, not Parkview and Moro. We worked with the state, the scope of that got expanded, as did the dollar amount of that grant. We were able to, with the support of our voters, get approval for and build Blanche Ames and move in in January of 2023. So heading towards the end of construction for Blanche Ames in 2022, the school committee of Easton voted to transfer care and custody of Center School to the select board effective upon the students vacating that property. Following this in November of 2022, town meeting voters authorized the select board to dispose of a former Center School with the amended stipulation that the town do so only to solicit proposals for community or recreation facilities which preserve yardly rink and further that prior to any sale of the property, that the town subdivide the parcel to preserve yardly rink as a standalone parcel. So the town has since completed the necessary engineering and permitting to separate yardly rink to its own parcel. That occurred earlier in 2024 with the planning board. So yardly rink will remain in the town's ownership and it is not going away. And it is not involved in the sale, that, that ownership remains with the town. At that same town meeting in 2022, the property was rezoned to residential because it had been for decades municipal use, which allows community and recreational facilities by a special permit of the zoning board of appeals. Further analysis since noted that recreational use were being limited to nonprofit recreational facilities, no other type of recreational facility. And to address that limitation based on the bids we've received and allow the potential sale to proceed as authorized by voters in 2022, there is a commensurate or co-related, I suppose is a better word, zoning article on your draft town meeting warrant for November 18th, which would change this from residential to business, which does allow indoor and outdoor recreation by commercial entities, still requiring going through the special permit process with the zoning board of appeals, rather than limiting it based on the, the structure of the entity owning the property. So we've worked with Joe Shea at Granite City's Partners to conduct a variety of the engineering and site preparedness for both this and the now successful sale of Moro Hall after that was approved by voters in 2022. Joe, I don't know if there's any highlights on the procurement you want to touch on before we invite the proponents up to give their presentation.
Thank you, yes, again, Joe Shea with Granite City Partners. We're a real estate advisory and engineering firm that's had the pleasure of working in Easton for several decades now through various iterations. Connor covered certainly the history of the site and the town meeting approval. With the town meeting vote to look for outdoor, indoor activities, community recreation possibilities, just two items I would like to make everybody aware of is that a open-ended expression of interest was issued in the spring with the parameters looking for community recreation. The applicant tonight, or the proponent tonight, was one of the respondents. A second respondent also provided to that expression of interest. They had a proposal to continue to use the school for some community purposes, but to turn the rest of it into residential development. That was outside of the parameters of the town meeting approval, so their expression of interest was acknowledged but not pursued. Following the expression of interest, a formal request for proposals in accordance with Massachusetts procurement law was issued, looking for the most highly advantageous proponents. During the non-mandatory pre-bid, two entities came to visit, but on application day, only one application was received, as Connor had indicated. It was from Fieldhouse Arena. They submitted quite a thorough package based upon our review. It was certainly responsive to all of the qualitative requirements of indoor/outdoor recreation, civic engagement, understanding the needs for health and wellness within Easton, certainly all of the qualitative qualifications in the package. It was highly in alignment with the experience and qualifications of an indoor/outdoor recreation facility to have Fieldhouse Arena here in Easton respond, given their understanding and abilities for operating such locations. They demonstrated appropriate financial capacity to pursue the project. They had a management plan that certainly amplified their current fieldhouse operation. This would be much larger, but they understand the operations of these types of fieldhouse components. They've been competently vetted. We were able to hear back from three of their references, all which were glowingly positive, and I can actually see some of them in the room. So that's a very compelling reference when they're willing to come and be with you at the presentation. And their contract team includes a D-CAM certified demolition contractor. One of the larger elements is demolishing the, the Center School. It was a liability that the town had that came up during the vetting process with MSBA. It's a liability that still exists. Under their proposal, their proposed price to acquire the property, we feel appropriately accommodates the costs of demolishing the school. That includes hazardous remediation and demolition. The final components of their timeline, of which I don't wish to steal their thunder, is they had an appropriate timeline and understanding of the next steps. The step here tonight is an approval to move forward with an intent to award the disposition pending successful town meeting, but they are aware that the future holds zoning board meetings about the, not the qualitative, but the quantitative components of their project, the size of the building, the location of the fields, the needs for, the need for any screening for noise and lighting. We'll let them get into those elements. They're also aware of conservation issues. Although it's an 11.7 acre parcel, about eight acres are upland. The backside of the parcel has conservation jurisdiction on it, and their proposal spoke to that understanding and awareness. In your package, for the selectmen, you have a memo from my business partner and I, Holly Roach Robinson, that lists all of these components that I've said here tonight, for anybody who would like to review it more thoroughly. And with that, I'd be happy to turn the microphone over to the applicant for them to talk about their proposal.
Great, thank you. And Joe, I just want to let people know that you and Holly have been amazing partners to this board. We trust the work that you've done and you've always given us good advice and been very thorough with walking us through, learning these processes. And I feel very comfortable when we're working on projects together. So thank you so much for that, for you and Holly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Holly's on vacation tonight, so I will see her that way there when she comes back.
Excellent. All right. So if the proponents want to come up, introduce yourself and start your presentation.
You can use the arrow to advance the slides on the bottom right.
Peter, Kevin, how are you?
Great to see you guys.
First of all, I'd like to introduce myself, Kevin Powers, with a 42 Ballroom Street, resident of Easton and just excited to share our vision with you guys and give you a little bit more information of what we're, what we're thinking about doing with the property.
Peter Galino, longtime resident of the town, grew up, went through the whole system. Family and I opened a Fieldhouse Arena late 2015 and have been operating successfully since then and have met many great people in the process of it all, so been very fortunate.
We also did bring another core member of our team, happens to be my brother. So he is a, going to address any technical construction questions. And with that, I'd like to, like to begin.
I think you brought your other relative as well. I can see.
I'm sorry, I'm remiss. Moza Galino is also here showing her support. She'll probably. She'll probably be very upset with me for not addressing that.
I would like to acknowledge her as well. Good to see you.
You said there was the down arrow or the right arrow?
The right arrow.
Okay, thank you. Kind of our vision, so we're looking to incorporate the quality, aesthetics and feel of Easton, so to create a better athletic facility experience. I think many of us have gone to some of the facilities that are around and they do a serviceable job, but we'd just like to really create something that really speaks to quality and the feel of the town. Our proposal, as indicated by Joe, does include the development of an indoor and outdoor facility. It'll have a wide range of sports and activities. The fields would be complemented by an upscale food and beverage experience. It would include hopefully in a beer and wine license. The goal of the food and beverage offering is twofold. It's to create an opportunity for people to mingle and interact, but it's also to provide a respite for parents who are way too busy today, dropping kids off everywhere. So rather than dropping your kids off and just going home, come and enjoy some time with, with us and hang out. We would hope to also include a kind of a covered patio terrace area where people could enjoy the outside, also escape the elements if needed. Both fields would be mixed use, meaning there would be field turf and there would be anything from soccer, baseball, softball, lacrosse, field hockey, physical fitness training, so very much a multi-use. Obviously, we're both soccer guys, but would love to have a myriad of sports and activities at there, at the facility. The indoor space also, one of the things that we felt strongly about is that it would allow us to host civic and community meetings, training sessions. Pete does a lot of birthday parties and other events. The Fieldhouse actually recently did a wedding due to inclement weather. So not going to say we're going to focus on that, but it would allow us to do a lot of fun things, provide some opportunity for community meetings. So our roots, I'm proud to say we're both townies. We both grew up in Easton. We both graduated from OA, played at sports throughout OA and have continued to be active members of the town. I moved back to town about 12 years ago when I could afford to come back. We purchased a house and I'm raising my family in town, in the community that I grew up with, which I think, to me, really speaks, speaks a lot to, you know, coming back to the town we grew up in. We both continue to play soccer. We're actively involved with Easton Youth Soccer as a coach, a board member, the referee coordinator, which referees is a hard job, so that one's fun. Pete has created and run a very successful business in the Fieldhouse. He's continuing his, his love of soccer by coaching and refereeing at youth levels as well. Just to continue kind of on our roots and what we think this project would bring to the town. When we kind of thought about this project, obviously it was very natural to look at other areas in the local area. And very quickly, we felt very strongly about developing this in the town. We wanted to, we wanted to be part of the town and it's a town that means a lot to us and to provide something that would help address the needs that the town has is really important to us. The facility would do several things. Obviously, it would provide some additional employment opportunities, tax revenue, a top notch facility in fields for local athletes to utilize. And most importantly, and I think this is something that's very prevalent and we do have a couple of guests who may speak to this, there's a need for additional athletic fields. With the huge uptick in club sports spanning the gamut between cross, I'm sorry, between lacrosse, field hockey, soccer, there's just not enough field turf fields. We're always kind of jockeying for position to use the high school fields for different events for the soccer league. And I think this would be a great way to help alleviate some of that. Kind of the location of the property. So it's centrally located. It would kind of help connect the current commercial and retail sectors in town. We'd also not only just be like a driving force behind the project, but Pete and I are very, very engaged in being the managing partner. So we'll be there for day-to-day operations, making sure our vision stays true and seek out opportunities to really connect with the town and the residents, which is very important to us. Some of our inspiration is, you know, some of the town staples and the iconic things in town, you know, Langwater's done an amazing job. We have Shovetown Brewery, we have Frothingham Yardley Rink. So we just wanted to take some of the feel and the, the classic Easton aesthetics and kind of blend that together with an athletic facility and a food and beverage offering. These are just some very conceptual ideas of just things we're drawing from inspiration from. So we're, we're very excited to hopefully be able to provide this to the town and just excited to kind of explore a little bit more into what we are thinking about doing.
This drawing here, I know it's on the screen behind me. This is the plot plan for, for Center School currently now as it stands. And so we took the orange there that you see, that would be the proposed building. And it's set back from the road as far as it can go, keeping in mind any buffer zones and lines that we really needed to avoid when we walked the property and we took big note of that. The green there is the outdoor space. And it is maximized to its fullest right now. Also, we kept in mind with the parking up front, Yardley Rink and yes, designating plentiful spots for them. But I think the big thing to keep, hit home here is that building is set back, so it won't be close to the road. We kept that in mind. We wanted to bring it back as far as possible. And I'll kind of touch on more of that after because we did request a building height. These are purely conceptual, but this is what we're really trying to aim for here. And it's kind of cool when it comes to life and you see it on the, on the computer, but you know, this type of layout is kind of what we're aiming for with the field and the building next to it. Had two separate ones here. These were the best that we kind of came up with conceptually, just to give a visual. But as you can see, you know, it really is aesthetically pleasing. Loved Center School. My sister went there, but I think this looks a lot better. And you know, with a path going around and evergreens and trees, it just really brings it to life. So just wanted to put that out there. These are some live photos that we've taken from the Fieldhouse photo album. And the next few slides are kind of going to touch on the mixed use opportunities. So this one here, you can see the field right now at the moment is opened up for soccer. The left photo, we tried to kind of show it, but the black netting is running down the side of the field. And we use that for any of the small ball sports, lacrosse, field hockey, baseball, softball, and that protects the walls. As you can tell, you know, our space being maxed out, that sideline is about four or five feet from the wall of the building itself. And though it is a smaller space, it has become a welcoming and fun place to be in when people come in there. And the top right photo is a youth sports shot of a young, young man playing soccer dribble. And now he's probably 14, but that was one of our early shots with the little guys in there. And it really is a great space for that. You can tell the turf is clean. That's something we kind of pride ourselves on and I'll touch on that after. More mixed use photos. So this bottom right shot is Eastern Youth Lacrosse running some drills. That was in combination, I believe, with Mansfield one winter. So the space is great for that. You can tell that the space is adequately padded, so safety is a big deal to us as well. The bottom left is golf. We've done clinics. The complete ceiling is netted off, so we're able to hit balls freely and open. The top right, that is field hockey. And that right there was U-18, so we were able to do skills and clinics even at that age. And the top left, if you can see, it's kind of tough with the photo, but that's Frisbee Golf Putting Tournament, actually run with the Borderland Billy Goats. So we connected with them over a few winters and started doing events with them and basically using the money raised in that, those events on Wednesday nights, that was pretty much going towards them putting money into new nets that they needed and things that kind of keep up the course at Borderland there. We've also used the space for yoga. The bottom right is a medicine ball class. We actually ran with the folks who opened up Eastern Fitness before they opened up Eastern Fitness, but we were doing things with them. And then the bottom left and top right can kind of show the dimensions and size of the batting cages when the nets are pulled out. So we have the opportunity to kind of split the half into four tunnels or that top right kind of demonstrates two big halves, which the men's softball team's always got a really big kick out of. And so just a little taste of, of how the facility can be mixed use. And again, this, this here is on a smaller scale, but the last nine years has really taught myself and my family and us that this can be done on a larger scale because currently we are, we are maxed out. Something that, you know, we wanted to kind of directly touch on is, is field turf and kind of what we would be looking into. We would be working with an expert of some kind. When we did look into turf for the Fieldhouse, and that was now 10 years ago, you know, we really stressed on safety, environmental friendliness. We touched on the quality of it, longevity, what it takes to clean these fields. So our field, and we went the route of no infill. A lot of days, and specifically more now, infill has become a big talk and what components are used with that. So at the Fieldhouse back then, we went with a turf that was probably five years ahead of its time. It's like a carpet. It's very thick. It has polymers woven inside of it instead of a loose infill. And so we were able to kind of go with that route and it has a padding underneath as opposed to infill because typically what infill does is give you that support padding and take impact and kind of improves drainage, but that's typically when you're talking about the outside, but inside you do have more flexibility. On this next slide here, just touching on, you know, environmentally friendliness is huge for us. But when you talk environmentally friendly sometimes and nowadays, pricing can become a big factor. And so right now, while we vet a few companies out, budget and viability is, is a big talk for us as we, we look through these options. Just to touch on, you know, a silica-based infill has been really popular and that's sand. That's a naturally occurring item. So a lot of places will take that now and fill that in instead of rubber. This other side of that, the flip side is you really need to maintain it. You need to either own a machine or you need to bring in a company once a month, every few months, quarterly in order to really maintain that. Because as kids play on it, adults, whatnot, it kicks it around, builds up in the corners. Maybe you've been at other facilities that see that happen. We don't want that to happen. That actually leads to injury. So if you see that, they're not maintaining it properly. A hybrid grass system, which is where they lay down a thinned turf. And then what they do is feed seed on top of that and grass grows and grabs the polymers of that thinned turf and grows within it. It's actually very popular in overseas right now. A lot of college stadiums, professional stadiums, and it keeps it very lush. So the polymers that are fake are actually set at a certain height, but the grass itself can be cut after some time and that actually gives that beautified real look to it, which is a nice touch. And then there's some other companies that stress, still looking to get more info out of them, but the PFAS Free Synthetic Turfs as well. And we listed some names there.
So kind of town connection. So very quickly, as far as developing this facility, we definitely, as we kind of touched upon before, satisfied an unmet need in the community of additional fields. Also touched upon, create additional employment, tax revenue. Our goal would also be to partner with the town's recreational sports leagues. I'm a board member of the soccer league and again, we've always struggled to get field turf or turf availability. So we'd love to utilize the facility to help enhance their programs when possible. Again, we touched upon the, the capacity to host meetings, work with civic groups, just example Lions Club or Garden Club or youth sports leagues. Pete currently has several of the board meetings for the youth sports leagues at the facility. Just another way we can kind of, you know, give back to the town and be involved. If space allows, we'd love to have a walking path where residents can utilize that in a safe environment. Part of the vision is also, and this was important to us, I went to Center School, so touring the school is interesting. I get to be in my classroom and see my locker. I was kind of bounced around between school to school when they were doing redistricting, but it was fun to, fun to see the school. We'd like to kind of commemorate the school and select maybe some memorable components of the building, maybe utilize some historical images of the building and, you know, even something as simple as restoring and preserving and reusing the flagpole. Just some ways that we can kind of, you know, commemorate the historical significance of buildings in that realm in Easton. So Yardley Wood Rink, I learned how to skate there. I was terrible and I was fun, but I was terrible at it. So we would certainly preserve the public access, provide parking spaces, welcome the opportunity to help provide additional support for the rink, just enhance the iconic Yardley Rink, whether that's hosting seasonal events and identifying other ways we could just be helpful with that and provide a helpful hand in that. So this is again, some images of some meetings and events that they've had at the Fieldhouse that we'd be able to continue having with a larger facility.
So in terms of site management, there's a few things that come into play here and we want to obviously do this properly. So if you're going to have the best turf, you got to have the best everything else. And one of those things is, is building height that we proposed 45 feet for. And that, simple answer is that it just allows for adequate play for the sports. At the Fieldhouse now, we kind of run into some issues with the height being at 22 feet. Soccer balls, you know, touching the ceiling a little too often. And, and that kind of gets, it gets in the way. And it's not just with adults, it's with the little guys too. So that's something we kind of took into play. And having that building set back as far as it is, it wouldn't be kind of taking over the road. Because I know we had looked at some of the trees along the edge there and it was clear that some of those trees are even taller than 45 feet. So we were looking to kind of be just under that and, and make it aesthetically pleasing from the road itself. Kevin had kind of mentioned the noise earlier and how, you know, we want to definitely, and we thought about this from the get-go, you know, Porter Street and School Street there, of course, fencing and natural plantings to reduce potential noise. It would be a huge move to do that along with us managing our operating schedule and taking into account the hours scheduled there. Lighting is a big thing. We would use directional controlled light that shines straight down, wouldn't get in the way of the street or affect anyone driving. And we would be more than happy to work out a photometric study if we needed to do so as well. We have looked into some companies that offer that as part of their plan if you end up going with them, so we can explore that more. And accessibility has kind of been a plus already with the traffic light that's been installed there recently and widening of the road with bike lane and, you know, the sidewalks that are more friendly for folks that might want to be accessing the, the site itself or maybe even just getting into Yardley Rink. Yep, okay. So just to kind of sum it up here with this, the topical photo again, kind of showing the, the proposed kind of layout and then some inspired photos there. You know, this project kind of gets me giddy when I, you know, talk about it a lot or just, I could keep going for hours, but we, I know we're on a time constraint because Joe said you better keep it in, in time. But this is something special for myself, my family and Kevin and being from the town that we would love to collaborate and make this happen in some way, shape or form. I've been super fortunate to have the Fieldhouse now going on our ninth winner, seeing so many faces in there, kids that are 10 now playing at the high school, scoring incredible goals, just because I know they trained at the Fieldhouse. They worked on their shots. They played multi-sport there, get to know the families, the, the parents. They enjoy the food. It's, if you were to ask anyone that came into our space now, they would tell you it's a family-friendly atmosphere that even though it's small, we, we make it feel big. And I, and I think that's really the big thing that I kind of take away from this. So with that said, if, if all went smooth and this project really did roll forward, we would probably be looking at a late '26, early '27 opening. And that's if everything went smooth. smooth, again, with no bumps in the road. And so, to circle it back around, I just want to thank the board for letting us come in today and pitch this out. And thank you guys for being here and listening. It means a lot to us, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you so much. So, just so that people know the way this will work is that I'm going to invite the select board members to have any comments and questions to the applicants, and then we're going to open it up to the people in the room that might have comments or questions. We'd ask you to raise your hand, we'll recognize you, ask you to come up to the microphone. That microphone doesn't amplify, it's for the cable studio to hear you. And we'd ask that you address your questions to me as the chair, not directly to the applicants. And if it's a question, I'll invite them to answer it. So, that's the smoothest way that we work with the public on that. So, I'm going to start with you, Jamie.
I'm going to start with the food. So, Rosie, thank you very much for feeding us for nine years, and I'm one of those parents that hasn't had time in between, and you guys have taken such good care of us. Kevin and Peter, I'll just start with, because you just barely touched on it, and I'm going to toot your horn a little bit more. The fundraising opportunities that you brought through the Fieldhouse to help other organizations out, not just soccer, you guys have been extremely generous in the space and time and resources that you provided. You mentioned it just with Borderland and allowing the frisbee golfers to then take some of that money and improve the experience over there, which I know is wildly popular for those that are, can throw a frisbee, I cannot. So, I just want to thank you both, and Kevin, you're out on those soccer fields every weekend, endless hours, making sure referees like my daughter don't throw too many red cards, even though John is here somewhere would appreciate some of those red cards, I'm sure. So, just what you guys have given to the community and the fact that you're both from here and long, you know, time residents and come back to put such a proposal together is extremely exciting for us as well, and I wish you guys a lot of luck through this process.
Thank you.
Yes, this is incredibly exciting to see and kind of, you start to see pictures around it and hear your vision for it. I'm part of the Women's Field Hockey Crew that comes in on Sunday nights here and there.
Oh, great, yeah.
And, you know, your description of the site being, it really is as clean as you're describing. It's a beautiful facility, really well maintained, and it makes me really excited to think about that care and such an important part of our community, because this really is kind of a centerpiece of the community. And you have proven to be good stewards of making sure that you, you know, things look good and run well. I really appreciate the attention to character, the local history, and the fact that you have history here yourself. It's coming through in your vision, and that's important, I think, in Easton. And there's a real need here, I mean, as evidenced by the fact that the Field Hockey Crew that I'm part of here and then is on Sunday nights, sometime at 9 o'clock, sometimes, 7 o'clock, 9 o'clock. It's late at night, Thursdays, things like 8 o'clock, it was always late because you guys are always so packed out.
Right.
So, the demand is there.
It's there, yeah.
And we hear it, we know the community wants this. When you see this model in other places, it's like, this works, why haven't we done this yet? So, very excited about that. And thank you for getting ahead on the environmental and health impacts. It's a really important thing that I think is another value that's going to come out within the community as discussed more and whatnot. And to me personally, it's really important to me as well. What are the typical hours, two quick questions, what are the typical hours for the Fieldhouse in terms of when you see your biggest kind of usage and then overall hours?
We have some daytime stuff, but mainly you have your after-school till 9:00, sometimes 10:00. Your weekends are full, you're talking 7:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00, 9:00 at night.
And as far as capacity goes, do you have any concerns with this expanded space and the availability of parking and resources? Like, it maps out well and works like it, there'll be no need for overflow into the neighborhood around, or?
Yeah, I mean, not with this, not with the parking, we've kind of factored in here.
Okay, excellent. I think that'll be really important to residents, so.
Yeah.
No other questions, just exciting to see how this unfolds. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the kind words.
Craig?
I have not had the opportunity in all the years I've been in town to be at your Fieldhouse, so I apologize for not taking that opportunity to go over there. I think I was at your mother's store one time with my wife, so. I think your presentation speaks to your involvement in this community, your enthusiasm, your thoughtfulness, and the detail that you put together is very impressive. Now, I just had a couple of questions that, let's assume that you are doing, you've got the contract, okay, and you're going to do this. What is your strategy for disposing of all the demolition materials that are at this site?
Sure, I mean, we would obviously, we've already kind of looked into one company that specifically handles that, they have a great reputation, they've been doing it for a long time, and we will rely on them to make sure that everything is done to the extent or greater than what the town expects, make sure the construction is done, demo is done at times where it's not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, making sure that as far as dust and debris, making sure that's covered and taken care of. But yes, we would rely on our contractors or the people that we vet to take care of that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's all regulated by state guidelines as well, so they have to follow very strict procedures in that works.
Okay, that's what I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just, it checks off a lot of boxes for me, you know, the story, we welcome businesses from all over to come to Easton, but the fact that two hometown townies, if you will, who really put their heart and soul, you can feel, you can feel the emotion that you have for this project and the passion as you present it. I think that you've covered so many of the things, the environmental concerns, you know, just the thoughtfulness about how to integrate it into a neighborhood. The need is definite. I feel bad that Mark Liam can't be here tonight because he's the chair of our Economic Development Council, but I will channel my inner Mark and say that he would be thinking about the jobs, the tax revenues, and this is an economic driver to our community for that area, so community businesses around that will also benefit, right? I think that, that just looking at this as an inspirational model, really caring for the Yardley Rink and the people that, you know, really care so much about that, being thoughtful about that as well. It's, you know, I really love everything that you have to say about it, the food, the beverages, I hear meals tax when we do that. If you were at last year's town meeting, we're talking about what a struggle it is sometimes to close these budget gaps, and people are saying, well, why can't we bring more businesses to Easton, you know, how can you do that? This, you know, if we had it the way it was before, that was a nonprofit, or the schools, they don't generate any kind of tax revenue, bringing in a business that's going to stimulate that economic growth, provide new growth, which helps us with our revenues, you know, adding to the tax base, it's really important, and this could make a real significant difference for us. And I'm really appreciative that you care enough to look at investing your hard-earned dollars into Easton for such a great need for the community. So, I just want to say one thing, though, we're here to get your presentation, and we're going to be voting on the contractual kinds of things, the sale price and so forth. But we don't have anything really to say about the details. The planning board is really going to be the board that looks to make sure all the details about parking and lighting, and they're experts in that area, so I appreciate that being part of this plan and this presentation tonight. But I just want people to be clear that that's not our role in this project. We just wanted you to be here to show this to the public, so. So, with that, is, does anybody in the audience want to make any comments? Come on up. Just introduce yourself, tell us your street address for our minutes, and feel free to comment.
Good evening, my name is Miguel Viera from 101 Kevin's Way in Southeaston. Here just showing my support of this potential project. I've been a member of the soccer board for the last eight or so years, the last handful as president, and I can speak to for sure the challenges and just the need for additional field space in our communities and the growing youth sports. And from both a rec and club perspective, I think an idea and a concept like this has staying power, and I just wanted to kind of voice my recommendation for these two. The league has dealt a lot with the Fieldhouse in the past, whether it's over the winter sessions and using time there, or as even an adult league that we would try to run. And Peter, as you've even seen through the presentation, he's very, he's thorough, he's succinct, they do everything to the highest standards, and, but you've already gathered that from the presentation and the way they spoke of it tonight, so just wanted to come out tonight and show my support.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So, if you live on Kevin's Way, you're somewhat of a neighbor to the Fieldhouse.
Correct.
So, what do you think of that from a perspective of a neighbor? Do you feel like that impacts your area with traffic getting in and out of your neighborhood, things like that?
No, I mean, I've never, being the closest street to the Fieldhouse, I know when there is busy times there, and it's never overflowed to our residential. Even as a member who rents time from Peter, we're trying to be cognizant of even that turnover time, we're giving ourselves enough buffer so one set of cars can leave before the next set of cars kind of arrives. We've run in, as a neighbor, we've never had any noise or disruptions on our street as a result.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for that.
No worries.
Anyone else? Come on up. John, it's been like 20 years since I've seen you, I almost didn't recognize you.
So, I'm John Broderick, not a resident in Easton, still can't afford it, but, just kidding. Also, I am the, I've been in Easton Soccer for 20 years now. I was also the youth minister at Holy Cross for a few years, and I'm currently the head coach for the All Rams Boy Soccer Team for a couple of years now. I just wanted to show support on behalf of, you know, Eastern Youth Soccer as my employer, but also I've known Peter, I coached Peter in 2009, 2008 at Oway. He was a player then, and then I've kind of helped him out and just been around, and he's done a fantastic job, obviously, with the Fieldhouse. Fieldhouse is brilliant, it's great to see a player of mine take on his passion and drive, and I was fortunate enough to also, you know, be at his wedding as I was able to be the minister, we'll say, so I married Peter. So, like, that all comes from these moments of community and drive and being together, right? And I think that this will become a staple in the community for many different sports and different, maybe programs within it, maybe not just sports, but other people taking advantage of it. So, I do think that Kevin and Peter have done a fantastic job, I've known Kevin now at the board, and I met Kevin probably 10 years ago, so I do know they have the capacity to do it. I think sometimes we overlook the fact that it's not just sports, right, it's the health and wellness factor, right? These kids have gone through a number of challenges and coming out of COVID still, we're still not out of all that stuff. So, I think that these are things that a facility like this will bring more opportunity for kids to kind of come back together and hang out. So, for me, again, I'm not an Eastern resident, but I will say I've spent the last 20 years in Easton every day, and I would say that this is a perfect place to kind of bring everyone together for a number of different reasons. And I do think from a business development perspective, having done these projects in Connecticut and other places, it is a big deal, and it does help towns that are looking for extra refs. So, I would say that they have my utmost support, and I think that the cleanliness of the facility, if you haven't been, Craig, you got to go, because you'll be impressed, you'll love it, and it's very, very clean, right? So, you got to go check it out. But I'll say that, so that's just full support from my end, not that it matters, I don't live here, but from the Eastern Youth Soccer League, I would say that there's a lot of people that are very happy, and then from All Rams, I'm sure all those sports would be honored to be a part of it. So, well done to you guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, we appreciate your contributions over all these years, and I really especially appreciate you flagging and underscoring the health and wellness part of it. That is something that we kind of looked at all these other pieces of it, but, you know, that is something that's super important, and the way that this, you know, weaves the community together, you know, I enjoyed your personal story. A little jealous I haven't been able to marry anybody yet, but, you know.
I'm only going to once, so just, but thank you.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Any young people want to come up and talk about how they feel about soccer?
If I could get Birch to be brave, come on up and tell us about his experiences, doesn't like being put on the spot, maybe Kira will. Yeah, we tried.
All right, well, thank you very much for being here to show your support, both of you.
Dottie, I'm sensitive to the applicants here for Master Plan Committee. If I could just ask one question of a proponent and then just close out for the public's benefit on what process looks like from here. So, I just want to remind folks, depending on the amount of time you've been on a board or been involved in Easton, this is a type of need, and I went back to check before tonight's meeting to make sure I wasn't speaking out of school, no pun intended. But back in 2014, when the Envision Easton Master Plan was first being developed, there was a few paragraphs that I won't read verbatim that were devoted to a section of a plan relating to recreation, and noted that it wasn't actually part of a formal work plan to talk about recreational facilities, but goes on to say that there are so many youth sports programs in towns, independent leagues in towns, that demand for fields, particularly for indoor sport venues, can be intense in Easton. Scheduling is complicated, but competition between not just the sports leagues, but with the schools and with our own recreational programming can be very challenging, and so you have all these different sectors vying for limited space. So, this has been an area that, based on feedback from a community, we've been hearing about for at least 10 years. On that note, I do want to ask, you know, you're a commercial entity, how do you see your role as a commercial athletic entity working to support and complement Easton's recreational programming?
Sure, it's a great question. Obviously, we will be a for-profit company, and it is very expensive to build these types of facilities, maintain them. We've looked at it a few different ways, I mean, with Eastern Youth Soccer, we, you know, I won't speak for Pete, but I'm going to speak for you. I know they work with them discounted rates as far as time to use the facility for their indoor program during the winter. You know, we'd love to, again, look at different sports and see what their needs are. Obviously, our prime rental areas, our prime rental times will certainly be spoken for, but finding ways where we can, whether it's the rec department or whether it's an adult league, again, we mentioned kind of civic meetings being held in the indoor space, but, you know, we're open to any ways possible that we can, again, we, I think we've shown that we really want to do this in the town and give back to the town. So, I think we're just open to options where we can help make a difference.
Great, thank you. And then, just a note on process, so Dottie has it right, the board's role here is stewards of a property soliciting a potential sale. Any vote, and the board's not taking a vote tonight, they have an executive session to review kind of value, financial-related questions. At a successor meeting, either on the 21st of October or November 4th, most likely, those are the board's regularly scheduled meetings, they would go through the process of actually ranking this proposal based on a public criteria that we published in August. And even at that time, if a board makes an award, it's contingent, and it'll be contingent on two things. One is town meeting zoning this property as business, because as I touched on in the introduction, the current zoning has restrictions around the entity type, although the goal was community or recreational facilities. And a second contingency would be the board and the proponents reaching a mutually agreeable purchase and sale agreement. Even at that point, the project would still need to go through a special permitting process before the zoning board of appeals, where that the proponents would have to demonstrate that they're taking site access, egress, lighting, safety, buffers, they have to go through CONCOM for buffers to the wetlands, they would have to go through the planning and zoning board for anything relating to the size of a building, the dimensions, things of that nature. And so, this is, there will be multiple steps along the way. But for anyone who happens to be watching or following along when this ends in a few moments without a vote, that's where that goes. So, thank you for allowing me to lay that process out, and appreciate you folks coming in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Can you close the lap?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're running behind a little bit further than 7:15, we're going to go right to that now. So, Envision Easton 2025, the Master Plan Update Committee appointments, we have contested three seats that are at lodge member seats with terms ending September 9th, 2026, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight people that are interested in the three slots. So, for the master plan charge, I just want to just briefly go through, the Master Plan Update Committee is charged with guiding the process for updating the master plan that takes into consideration current trends and issues with a focus on housing needs and environmental sustainability through active public engagement, trend analysis, and collaboration. trend analysis, and collaboration with other municipal boards and stakeholders, the Master Plan Update Committee will work to create an updated plan that's responsive to the needs and visions of the community. The Master Plan Committee will work closely with the Planning and Zoning Board, the Planning Department, and a hired consultant. The committee will also provide updates to their progress to the Planning and Zoning Board every two months and to the Select Board as requested. So I am going to go through, we don't have everybody here tonight, and if I don't recognize somebody, I apologize for that, but I'm just going to go through the list in the order that we have in the agenda packet.
Just want to make a note that Deborah Govea, the fourth on the list in your notes, has withdrew.
She withdrew?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I will do is I'll ask you to come up when I call your name. You can sit at the table here and we're just, I'm just going to ask you to introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the committee and what your skills are that are relevant to the, to being a committee member. So the first is Tana Babbitt. I saw you come in.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Tana Babbitt. I have been a resident of Easton since 1991. I have, my husband and I have raised four children here. I have been a member of the Eastern Rec Commission for a long time. I don't know, it's pushed in 20 years. It might be 18, 19, 20. I'm the current Chair of Eastern Recreation. And as the master plan has a, an important recreation piece, I think somebody from recreation should be represented on the committee. What are my qualifications? I guess that I'm very interested in recreation. Recreation is not my only passion. I'm also passionate about diversity, inclusivity, and sustainability. And I retired in April from my job as a senior biochemist and lab manager. So I have time and interest in investing in our community. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate you throwing your name in the hat.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Davis. Melissa, come on up.
Hi, my name is Melissa Davis. I've lived in Easton now for over five years. My son went to Oliver Rams High School, graduating in 2018. Yeah, that's definitely over five. And so prior to that, I've lived in Randolph, where I was a select, the way they did it was with a town meeting member, it was a voted position as a town meeting member. I was also the, a Girl Scout leader for Randolph for the years that I was there. And I'm an insurance broker for health and accidental insurance. I just really want to get involved in the community. And I love the idea of just like getting everything going. And I read it and I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but
That's okay.
I couldn't, I can't put it into words. It's like, yeah, the, the recreational part, the hiking or the, the history. Girl, I grew up in Hanover. And if anybody knows Hanover, they have a huge history. And my family was a part of that history for generations. And then unfortunately, we had to leave town, but you know, that happens. So it's like the history of any town is very important to everybody. Affordable housing. Right now, I do live in the trailer park at 305 Turnpike Street. I understand it doesn't look great when you go by the front row. We know that. We're working on it. I was on the Homeowners' Association, first on the board, then I was vice president, and then for a little while, president of the Homeowners' Association. I like to be involved in the community. That's about all I can think of right now. I'm sorry.
No, I apologize. I think sometimes people don't realize that it can be very nerve wracking to come up and speak in a, in a room like this. So I appreciate you doing it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. It was really nice to meet you.
Thanks.
And we enjoy seeing new faces come before us. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Next, we have Sahara Defensor.
I was going to say good morning, but I guess it's getting. Hi, my name is Sahara Defensor. Apologize for my voice.
No problem.
I am coming up now on about two years as an Eastern resident. My husband and I moved here from Washington DC. I went to law school here. I hail from a very small, tiny Pacific island in Guam. So being part of a community and building community and engaging in community is something that's very, very important to me. When my husband and I, you know, when we got pregnant, I have a two and a half year old, so happy to take any advice, guidance for, for raising a little rambunctious one. We looked and searched around everywhere in this, in this state. And we kept coming back to Easton. My husband grew up here, as I mentioned, and then he moved away. And one of the things that I was very much impressed by was the community that was built over the years, moving to Washington DC with him for, to, to take on a dream of mine to, to do some public policy out there. He, you know, the idea that the community of people that he met and that he built here in Easton was then transferred and carried over to this small little community that we found, like, you know, in the middle of nowhere. I mean, DC's not the middle of nowhere, but there are very, very small communities out there. And so my qualifications, although I am an attorney, I, I understand that there are much better subject matter experts in that field. And my background in public policy and creating, you know, grassroots initiatives and using grassroots efforts into building and creating positive value, not necessarily just for my, my child to grow up in the roots that we intend to build here in this town, but more or less the idea that we're just, the community is important for my child, right? And for, for us as, as a family. And I think the value that I can bring is also the, the differences in perspectives. So I'm looking forward to doing that and leading everybody. And really, even though I presented for people, I am yours. So it's not just, it always happens all the time. So I get it. I'm there with you. I stand with you. Yeah. And I, I thought this was an interview, so I was prepared to answer questions, not necessarily make a presentation, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sahara.
The next on the list was Deborah Govea, and she has withdrawn. The next one is Nancy Hamilton.
Ms. Hamilton was unable to attend tonight, but she still wishes her application to be considered by the board.
Okay, I'm just gonna do a quick glance through here. She is a retired registered nurse. And her relevant education and experience for the position is a career college educated taxpayer. She has no experience on boards or committees, and her skills and talents are concerned taxpayer. So we thank Nancy for reaching out to volunteer as well. Next, we have Michael Mulcahy. Hi, Michael. Good to see you again. You've been here before, right?
It's good to be seen, of course. Hi, my name is Michael Mulcahy. I've been an Eastern resident. I think we're going on four years, as Sean can probably tell you. I moved here from New York. I just did a great deal. I was in New York earlier today. We have two children in the Eastern school system, both at Eastern Middle School currently. My qualifications, I am currently working for a global asset management firm headquartered in New York. I am an economic consultant and a strategic advisor. I own my own research and advisory practice. I've been tenured with my current firm for approximately two years. I've filled experience in 27 countries. I have an undergraduate degree from Emerson College. My initial masters was in politics and economics from the New School for Social Research in New York City and the London School of Economics at the Woolley School for Capital Market Dysfunctionality. I did a second masters at, at New York University and was pursuing a doctorate in politics and constitutional law. We had two kids, so doing a PhD and having two children, as if I wasn't masochistic enough, wasn't in the cards. I, I do have public sector experience. I was part of a track two diplomatic exchange program with the University of Tehran in Tehran, Iran. I spent three summers in Iran. In addition, I was also part of, I don't know how to pronounce it correctly. It's, some people pronounce it Cigar. It's the Special Inspector General for Afghan Reconstruction. I call it Saigar because I don't want people to think I'm talking about a smoking device, so I call, I call it Saigar. So I spent approximately, oh God, 18 months researching economic and social conditions in Afghanistan for the Special Inspector General. Why am I interested in the master plan? One of my critiques at the federal level for the US government is that there's no five, 10, or 20-year plan that we have collectively. I don't want to use them as examples, but if you ask someone in the Ministry of Finance in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia what their five, 10, 20-year plan is, they will give you a brief outline of that. Same with the, the People's Republic of China, the Chinese Communist Party. If you ask someone, even a low-level member of the Interior or the Finance Ministry, they will give you a plan that they have for five, 10. We don't have that here at a federal level. However, I can impact at a local level, and that's what I'm really looking for, particularly in economic development. And I read the, the, the three reports. I think there was 300 digital pages of information. Another area of great concerns, and I think we addressed this with Sean, as part of the Citizen Academy Program, which I graduated from, was the communication aspect. I had no, absolutely no idea about things like town meeting, the Select Board. I had no idea. I came from a big city, which was, you know, like a mayor or a structure. I think it's important for that aspect to communicate with our fellow citizens about the potential for participation in local community and to, for lack of a better term, make a difference.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Skinner. Hi, Tom. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. Yes. I've, my wife, daughter, and I have been a resident of Easton for the last seven years. We moved from Connecticut. And before that, I was in Los Angeles. So it's a very, very large city. Not very, not, you know, we lived in one of the smaller towns, Long Beach. Did, you know, started to get involved there. In Connecticut, right before we moved to Massachusetts, here in Massachusetts, I started to get involved. And we, the town was going through a very challenging, like, a very challenging way to go, to put into the historical, historical area. And the town lacked a lot of vision, long-term vision for that project, ultimately got denied. And the amount of economic benefit it would have given to that town in Connecticut would have been great. Living here in Easton, it reminds me actually, growing up in Los Angeles, even though I grew up in Los Angeles, my little, my neighborhood in Los Angeles reminds me of a lot of Easton, which I thoroughly enjoy. And my wife and I both have said, hey, you know what? We like this. We're, I think we're, you know, seven years is actually the longest we've actually lived in a city. And we plan on living here longer. And currently professionally, I'm a process improvement manager with Lean Six Sigma. And I, this, this is kind of weird. It sounds like, how do you draw the parallels between the two of these? Well, I think kind of it draws a lot of like process, a lot of operational, operational management that I have over 25 years of experience, looking at the overall society of what we need. The pieces that I kind of highlighted here were housing needs and environmental sustainability. We don't have to go very far for housing needs. It'd be, that would be kind of interesting. I was talking to my wife about this, like, it would be really cool to get like different types of housing, to grow the, to grow the different backgrounds that are in our community, but in, but environmentally correct. That presentation earlier was kind of played into it, and it played into a lot of that sustainability. And I think in the time, in the short time I've been here in Easton, I think I've seen us grow and grow and grow. And I, you know, excited about the changes that are coming to the different complexes in town over the next few years, the schools and saying that this town is invested in it. I'd be really excited to be part of that, a part of the appointed committee to help look at that, that long-term plan and improvement.
Thank you. I appreciate you recognizing some of those things, especially as someone who is fairly new to the community, that housing and sustainability are really important to this board and to our community.
Yes.
Thanks for noticing that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
And Lisa Yora. Lisa is the last person on the list, and I'm just going to look at her submittal. And Lisa is a social service coordinator. Her relevant education and experience, she's a college graduate and has lived in Easton for 30 years. She has not been on any town boards or committees and has not listed any skills or talents pertinent to the position. So this is quite a slate of people. This is the hard part because we only have three positions and everyone here tonight was excellent and well-qualified. What I will say is, we, we could always add seats to a lot of the committees that we have. And we've done that before, and it never works. Because what happens is, the bigger the group is, the harder it is to achieve a quorum. So, but what I will say is, if we, when we had the original master plan, we had many, many community members involved in it. So I would just say, if you're not selected to be on this committee, I would ask you, please go to the meetings because you can still contribute. You don't, you're not a voting member, but you're certainly a contributing member. And that's, that's really very helpful as well. So, so how is the best way that you would like to, does anyone have any candidate that you want to start with?
I just want to say, once again, this is difficult when we've got such great candidates coming out. So thank you to all of you. And thanks for sharing some of the information about your backgrounds too, which is, I find fantastic when we see the draw that Easton has had and some of the people that have joined our community over the last five, seven, 10 years. So thank you all very, very much for being here.
One of the nicest parts about this town is the people who volunteer. It's always a difficult decision for us to make. And I will echo it. What Jamie said, I appreciate very much you taking the time to volunteer.
So does anyone have a particular candidate that they want to move, they'd like to make a motion to move forward?
I, I would like to move forward with Sahara Defensor. I was very impressed with what she had to say and her investment.
I really appreciated her understanding of the importance of like grassroots community development. I think she brings a really fresh perspective, having a young child and is clearly invested in being here for a long time. So that's also, so I'll second that.
So that, Craig, that's a motion?
That's a motion to point Sahara Defensor.
And second by Stacy. And this will be a roll call vote? So.
Stebbins Defensor.
Stacy Defensor.
Old Genetti Defensor?
Barger Defensor.
Okay.
Dottie, could I speak next?
Yeah.
On some Michael Mulcahy, I, first thing that goes through my mind when you're up here speaking is, where are you going to find the time? I listened to your background. I don't know if we have, this isn't necessarily an answer, question, answer, but this was the one question I had about his background because I'll speak a little bit to some of the things I, I liked, which are the, the global reach, the time he spent in Tehran and Iran and just the, the economic, economics background as well. But again, I, I listened to this and he looks 10 years younger than me, and I swear he packed like 50 more years into, into his however many years span. So I, there's a little bit of a cognitive dissonance for me, but that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm going to.
Can we put on that and remind how, what's the time commitment for this as far as how frequent it will meet? That's a really good point about.
Commitment, time commitment.
Commitment, yeah.
The Director of Planning happens to be in the room.
Yes. So, as the charter, I think, states, the expectation is that the board will meet at least on a monthly basis. It may be more need, there may be a need to meet more frequently at times when we're doing public outreach and need to consider and digest the information that's given back and work with a consultant to kind of formulate that into the plan. But on a monthly basis at least.
Okay.
Stephanie, can I ask you a question? The, the term ends on, on this committee for these. The, the, the term ends on, on this committee, for these appointments, September of 2026. Do you anticipate that being completed by that time or before that time?
The, the plan is to work towards completing by that time. That's, what, almost two, about 18 months, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
And, you know, if we need to extend it, then the, we'll come back to the Board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anybody that is not able to make that kind of a time commitment before we move further? Okay.
So are you making a nomination?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for Mr. Mulcahy.
Okay. I can, I'll second that.
So that's Stebbins and Barger?
Uh, Stebbins, Mulcahy.
Stacy Mulcahy.
Full Genetti Mulcahy?
Barger Mulcahy.
Before we go to a third candidate, Connor, I don't like to ask questions I don't really answer to, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we didn't have.
That's a great segue.
We didn't have Recreation, uh, the Recreation Department Committee listed in the Boards and Committees that we're on here.
Yes, that's, uh, I think fair to say probably just an oversight on my part, drafting the charge. It was, we were trying to identify, uh, Committees with a bunch of the involvement on the front end 10 years ago, without it turning into every single Committee, because there's so much involvement. But I'd be more than open to the Board. It's your charge, uh, so I have no pride of ownership over it, but that, I think, I'll take responsibility, say that's an oversight. We could certainly have a formal seat from the Rec Commission if the Board would like.
Okay.
You can't do it tonight, because it's not on your agenda, but you, you certainly could amend your charge for those cross-committee appointments.
I'm so glad you raised this, because that was a struggle for me, too.
Yeah. Okay. So we're gonna get that on, on the next agenda to amend the charge to add a representative from the Recreation Committee.
Great. Good suggestion.
Okay. And, um, for the, for the third, um, I would like to recommend Melissa Davis. I think it's important, when we're looking at the diversity of the people that we have on these Boards and Committees, and Melissa, in the areas of town where you are, that we don't get a lot of representation. And so I think that that gives a lot of valuable input, because we're talking about things, uh, a lot of socio-economic, a lot of transportation. Um, there's some weaknesses in certain parts of the town for, for transportation and coordination, and I think that that, that would be a voice that would be important to have as part of this.
I agree.
So I'll make a motion, uh, for Melissa.
I will second that.
So that's Full Genetti and Barger?
Stebbins, Davis.
Stacy Davis.
Full Genetti Davis.
Barger Davis.
So, um, you, the, the three that were just, uh, voted on will get, uh, email from the Town Clerk. You have to get sworn in before the meetings. Uh, we really encourage you to please try to attend as many of the meetings as possible. If it turns out that it's not a great fit, let us know, uh, and we'll fill that seat. But we really want, this is gonna be a robust committee, and we want to make sure there is participation. We'd really love to have you, uh, still join, like I said, if you're willing to do that. Um, and we really appreciate everyone. This is, these are really tough nights for us, because we wish we could appoint everybody, so.
Yeah, I agree. Just thank you again to Tom, and Tana, thank you for being here tonight.
Great. Thank you. So let me just go back to where we were in the agenda before we got here.
We're at item 10.
Item 10. So, in, item 10 is the envision Easton 2025 Master Plan Update Committee Appointments as Nominated Representatives with Terms Ending September 9, 2026. So the nominees were Joanne Zigment from the Planning and Zoning Board, Nikki Distumian from the Affordable Housing Trust, Chris Lopes from the Economic Development Council, Kelly Persio from the School Committee, or Designee, Beth Devonshire from the Human Rights Committee, Stephen Drown from Environmental Stewardship Committee, Ernie Smith from Age Friendly Advisory Committee, Stephanie Danielson from the Planning and Economic Development Director as an ex-officio. So we just need to make a motion to approve that slate.
So I move to approve the slate as presented.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy, and it's a roll call.
Stebbins Slate.
Stacy Slate.
Full Genetti Slate.
Barger Slate.
Excellent. Um, the next item up is Constable Reappointment, Adam Loomis, for a term ending June 30th, 2027. Um, these are pretty typical reappointments that we get, and, uh, I'm just trying to find this in my packet here. Um, these, uh, what I want to say is, these are reviewed and vetted by our Police Chief.
That's right, the Police Department and the Collective Treasurer. There's no concerns with those Departments on a renewal, and the, uh, Mr. Loomis has an updated bond on file. This typically would have happened during the fiscal year cycle, but the application wasn't filed, and once we received it, we figured to proceed with it.
All right. Any questions?
I'll move to, uh, re- reappoint, uh, Adam Loomis as a Constable with a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
So that's Barger and Stacy, and this is also a roll call vote?
Stebbins, Loomis.
Stacy Loomis.
Full Genetti Loomis.
Barger Loomis.
Excellent. Um, the next item up is Discussion and Vote for Setting of the Select Board 2025 License Fees.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attaches a proposed 2025 license fee roster for the Board. Each October, the Board votes to set these fees ahead of our renewal process. Almost all of those licenses fall on a calendar year basis. Uh, these are consistent with the rates that the Board has levied for the entire time I have been here, I think, going back to, you know, 12, 12-plus years, except during COVID when they were cut. Uh, it now includes the film permit fee schedule that the Board recently voted to adopt. We would recommend that fees continue at the same level for now, but we just make the note that, uh, they have been static for, for some time. So we do periodically check with other communities where their fees are at. Uh, I, I don't believe we're wildly below the average, but we, we will continue checking, and if there's appropriate adjustments based on where the market's at, we'll bring them back.
Okay, great.
So I move to set the Select Board to 2025 License Fees as presented.
Second, Stacy.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. I do want to mention that I appreciate the fact that we do, uh, when I say we, you and Sean do review these with other communities. Um, when we're looking at closing budget gaps, this is an area where we could raise fees to be able to do that, and we try not to do those. I'm just, I'll probably be trying to point out things like this all the way through budget season, because people are like, where can you get more money? This is an area we could get more money, but it hurts our stores and people that do need some of these one-day licenses, uh, which is also an impact to our economic development. So the next item we have is item 13, uh, review and for special town meeting November 18th with a warrant draft.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Before Labor Day, uh, as has become practice, the Board voted to open a warrant for articles for a town meeting to be held on Monday, November 18th at 7:00 at the Oliver Ames High School Auditorium. Uh, this will address our fall business and items that are more timely now, rather than waiting for the May annual town meeting. Uh, this is pretty typical. Your warrant for the 18th is smaller than the annual town meeting. You have about a dozen articles here, uh, but these are nonetheless timely and important. I have a few articles that are sufficiently drafted that I would ask for your vote to include and potentially recommend, and I could just tick through them if the Board is fine with that. So the first one is Transfer to Stabilization Fund, uh, as part of the town's ongoing, uh, management of our reserves that we touched on during the bonding section. Uh, we have observed a practice of transferring 25% of any certified free cash from the close of a prior fiscal year into our stabilization fund, uh, at that fall town meeting. Uh, we are finalizing fiscal '24's closeout, so I don't have an exact dollar amount there. We will include that in the motion, and we'll have it before town meeting, and I'll, uh, share that with the Board. But this is, uh, an area that's particularly important as we, uh, head into challenging financial times and having actually used stabilization funds in fiscal '25 in a more meaningful way than we have in quite some time since the first year of COVID, uh, that we try to build that back up. So I would ask for the Board to take a vote to include and recommend, if there are no questions.
Okay.
I'll move to include and recommend Article 1.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous.
Uh, Article 2, we always include, uh, on the warrant, there's no bills at this time from a prior fiscal year that are in need of consideration before town meeting, but we like to put this article on in the event something comes up before the meeting. So, uh, this time I would just ask for the Board to take a motion, uh, to include Article 2 in the warrant.
I'll move to include Article 2 in the warrant.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous.
Great. And the last item I would ask your consideration of tonight relating to the November 18th warrant is Article 5. That's the dedication of Swift's Park for park and recreation purposes and the acceptance of Massachusetts Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, also known as park, grant and appropriation of grant-to-end gifts funds. So we wanted to see how many words we could fit in the title, uh, which is why this is here. Um, in sincerity, this article is here because, uh, town meeting voters were generous in May to appropriate $698,000 of CPA funds, as was the CPA Committee, uh, for the reconstruction of Swift's Park to serve as a memorial to the lives lost and first responders who selflessly served the community during the 1918 influenza pandemic as well as the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the total project cost was estimated at $834,000, with the remainder not covered by that CPA grant, uh, to, expected of the CPA Committee by the project proponents, which is the town, through our citizens on the Swift's Park Steering Committee, to raise funds through donations in the community and grants. We're excited that the Planning Department successfully wrote and received a $100,000 state grant, which closes most of that gap, uh, and some of the conditions of that grant are that this article be voted on. So, uh, we do not typically, uh, appropriate through town meeting gift funds. Massachusetts municipal finance law does not require that. It's typically accepted through the Select Board or gift account you've established, and then the gift proceeds. Uh, but a condition of this state grant is that we need to demonstrate a full appropriation covering the project budget, and there, so we can't say, well, we're good for the donations over here. They want to see that appropriated through town meeting. The reason I'm giving this level of explanation is because this is a reimbursement-based grant. So 100,000 would be out of available CPA funds. Once the state sees that we have taken that vote, they will then transmit 100,000 to us and will reimburse CPA. So at the end of the day, this does not increase the local tax spending of this project at all. This article needs to be approved if we want to receive the state's $100,000. So that's, that's that. For that reason, I, uh, recommend, uh, your vote to include and recommend.
That's great work on that grant.
Yeah, I think we should, we should acknowledge Stephanie Danielson for getting this grant before we vote on it. Um, I, I move to include and, uh, recommend and include Article 5.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous.
Great, excellent. Thank you.
All right, right on to item 14 for a special municipal employee designation, Shovel Town Cultural District Liaison.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. I'm proposing the Board consider adding the existing position of Shovel Town Cultural District Liaison to your roster of special municipal employees. That's a state designation under state ethics law. One of the important aspects of this designation, uh, which is reserved under state law for unpaid or extremely part-time municipal employees, is that it allows them to take other additional paid opportunities, should they be qualified. Uh, the Board, from time to time, does update its roster of specials. That includes most Board and Committee positions, because they're not paid, uh, in Easton. In this example, the liaison position is budgeted and works approximately 520 hours a year. The state's threshold is, you cannot be a special unless you work fewer than 800, but this is a position that routinely does, uh, so I recommend that may be added to that roster.
Any questions, comments? All right.
I move to designate the position of Shovel Town Cultural District Liaison as a special municipal employee.
Second.
Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, next we have Swift's Park Steering Committee Extension of Appointment with Terms Ending in June 30th, 2027. Craig Barger, Select Board Rep, Ed Hands, Community Preservation Committee, John Ventresco, Historical Commission, Justin Alexander, Eastern Fire Department, Antal Beza Jr., Commission on Disability Rep, uh, Chief Keith Boone as Eastern Police Department Rep, and, uh, Chris Mills, Board of Health Rep. I think that's it. Um, as the work of Swift's Park, uh, Swift Memorial Park continues, the Board is being asked to extend the appointment for various Board and Committee and Staff Representatives on the Swift's Park Steering Committee. Under the Committee's charge, the Select Board has the authority to extend appointments on the Committee for a specified period of time to line up with other members of the Committee. It's recommended to extend these appointments for a term ending June 30th, 2027. So if nobody has any, uh, comments or questions, we can take that as a vote for the slate, and it will be a roll call vote.
I move to vote for the slate for.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy.
Stebbins Slate.
Stacy Slate.
Full Genetti Slate.
Barger Slate.
Excellent. Uh, next for, um, item 16, we have an acceptance of resignation, Adam Fernandez from the Eastern Cultural Council with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2027. Um, we've received a memo, um, that's in our packet, indicating that Adam Fernandez has resigned from the Eastern Cultural Council, leaving a seat with a term expiration of June 30th, 2027. So we appreciate, um, Adam's, uh, time on, on that Committee, and, uh, we'll take a vote to accept his resignation, and that is also a roll call vote.
I move to accept the resignation of Adam Fernandez from the Eastern Cultural Council with a seat expiration, June 30th, 2027.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy.
Stebbins Fernandez.
Stacy Fernandez.
Full Genetti Fernandez.
Barger Fernandez.
And we also have an acceptance of resignation of Kathy Adler, um, from the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. Um, we have a memo that Kathy has resigned from this Committee. I just want to say, I served with Kathy on this Committee, and I've, uh, worked with Kathy. She was one of the, um, original co-chairs of the Master Plan Committee. Kathy is my go-to person for a lot of things, human rights questions, age-friendly questions. She's been invaluable, uh, and a great supporter of this Select Board over all these years. Um, her and her wife, uh, moved to Sharon, uh, to downsize, so another testament to why we need more diverse types of housing in our community, so people have a place to downsize to. But I just want to thank Kathy. She was exceptional on this Committee, um, super overachiever, really pushed the, the Committee to do a lot more than we had originally intended, so, um, we'll accept her resignation with regret as well.
Absolutely. I move to, to accept the resignation of Kathy Adler.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy.
Stebbins Adler.
Stacy Adler.
Full Genetti Adler.
Barger Adler.
Excellent. Did I miss anything as we get to the last couple?
Minutes?
No? Okay. Um, I have jet lag, and to me, it's like 2:00 in the morning right now, so.
You're doing wonderfully. You can't tell.
Was it the, did you already do the minutes? No.
No, we're doing that now. The acceptance of the minutes for September 23rd, 2024?
So I'll move Barger.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Uh, Town Administrator Notes?
Sure, I just have a few. Uh, one is I want to, uh, touch on Easton's ongoing community energy aggregation program. We've been running a bulk supply purchase of electricity in Easton since 2020. Last November, we moved from our locked-in three-year rate of 10 cents per kilowatt-hour to 14 cents, which was, you know, disappointing to see that go up, but still represented a, a meaningful savings against the market. As folks may recall, last, uh, in 2023, uh, when basic supply was in excess of 30 cents per kilowatt hour, uh, our being locked into that program, uh, was saving close to 200 dollars a month, uh, for some homes, which is pretty incredible. Uh, and I, I want to point out now that we have some performance info in, since November And I want to point out now that we have some performance info in. Since November of last year, residents have saved roughly 1.3 million in electricity supply. That equates to a smaller amount of monthly savings, about $30 per monthly saving per account holder, certainly down from that cost avoidance in '23. But I think the perspective is important. It's about $360 a year, which is more than the average house is paying for the construction of Blanche Ames. So, I think that's a great program that's actualizing some-
Say that again.
Right now, even with the new rate that started in November of 14 cents per kilowatt hour compared to grid basic, your average home's saving about $30 per month in electric supply. That, over the course of a year, is more in savings than the average house is paying for the construction of Blanche Ames.
So, it would be in net neutral?
It, well, it's, it's actually in the black. Blanche Ames median house is about $290 per year.
Wow, that's great. That's really great.
So, that's a good program that is helping avoid some, some costs for folks for essential things they have to pay for during a challenging inflationary time. So, that's some good news. Speaking about grants, Planning Department also was invited into the Community Compact. That's a state best practices program where they'll be providing technical and some financial support for us to be bringing folks in to evaluate our permitting processes and look at things like expedited permitting to make sure that we're continuing to try to put the right foot forward to have as efficient and effective permitting processes as we can, where we're doing what we have to do from a regulatory perspective, but getting people in to permitting and getting them through permitting and getting them to shovels on the ground as quickly as we can, because that's very important. So, good work to Stephanie on that as well. And I want to tie that back to, last week, Easton was one of only 33 communities in the state invited to an event with the governor recognizing Easton's compliance with the MBTA Zoning Act. That's gonna be in the news again a lot this fall, the Supreme Judicial Court case of a certain community that's appealing that law started today. So, Easton was with only 33 of the communities who were the first out of the gate to comply. So, I want to thank Planning of the Board, the Planning Board, but also the voters here in Easton. You know, land use policy can be tricky when you involve state mandates that can evoke a lot of challenging local politics, but voters in Easton pretty consistently do the right thing, and I appreciate that they did. And there's a direct connection between us doing those things and continuously receiving these grants that we need.
Well, speaking of grants, that announcement included some funding opportunities that are gonna be coming out as a result of being one of those communities. And like Easton has been known to do, getting in on the front end of those usually gives us a lot bigger opportunity for getting those grant funds upfront.
That's right. So, thank you.
And I want to thank Sean for being there. I saw you in the group picture.
Craig and Stephanie, yeah?
Yep, you and Stephanie. So, thank you for being there for that. That was really important for you to be there, representing Easton as well.
It's right down the street from my house, so couldn't pass the opportunity.
First time I've ever been in Somerville.
Welcome.
And Craig, you were there, too, right?
Of course I was, yes, yes.
Geez, I take one vacation, I miss all the fun stuff.
That's right, that's right.
Sean, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention, there's a survey that we put out to the community for the municipal vulnerability preparedness 2.0 grant that we had recently received. The board may remember that the MVP process produced a plan a handful of years ago, and 2.0 is building on the, building on that plan, and it has more of a focus on environmental and social, environmental justice and social parity. And so, the survey that is out now is looking to bring more vulnerable voices into, into the fray and to be able to respond and tell us how we can be more resilient as a community in what impacts they are most concerned about as it relates to climate. And so, as part of the core team, Dottie and I are members of the core team. We're doing a broad outreach campaign, and part of that is having the general, the general community be able to respond to the survey. It's relatively brief. It's only 13 questions, so it should take little to no time, but we do have it available at the Ames Free Library, Brothingham, here at Town Hall, and we have it available in a number of languages, including English, Spanish, Portuguese, Arabic, and Haitian Creole, and thanks to the School Department for helping us with those translations. But we encourage the community to take it, and it is open until November 1, and it's available on the homepage of our website at easton.ma.us.
That's awesome, and I'm really excited to hear about the language translations. We really care a lot about the diversity and equity in our community. As we see the community change and grow, we do have a lot more non-English-speaking families and residents, and I know that we've been working towards that goal. The schools probably deal with that a lot faster than we do on, on the Select Board and on the town side, so that's a great collaboration with them to make sure that this happens. So, thank you, Sean. I know that you were a real advocate in making that happen when we were talking about that in, in the meeting, so, thank you. Select Board?
Yeah, I'm gonna toot the horn of the Environmental Stewardship Committee and the Chair, Christina Reford, the wonderful showing at the NRT this past Sunday when that group debuted the resource guide for the community that they've been working on for the last two years. And I want to thank Sean because he helped on the backend and making sure that launch and the QR code worked and the links that we needed were, that worked. But they saw over 600, I think conservatively, 600 people visit their booth, and Craig and I had the pleasure of standing next, next to it. But, and then Birch Stebbins I want to call out because he was there for the entire fair as well, but not just the fair. He got up at 7:00 to go set up with me and then go back and spend the rest of the time there. So, great job. But Christina Reford, Carolyn McCafferty, Stephen Drown, and Amy Spencer did all that hard legwork for, again, better part of the last two years, putting together a tremendous resource guide that I ask everyone to just, if you get an opportunity, it's now the Environmental Stewardship Committee, formerly the Green Communities Committee. If you get a chance, please check that out. Tons of great links in there, so it's, it's active and being kept up to date with phone numbers and links to other resources and information for the community, so.
Thanks, Jamie, and thanks for your stewardship of that committee as well as representing the Select Board on there. So, you've done an amazing job on there as well.
Thanks. I feel like very little lifting compared to them, but thank you.
We haven't talked about the Fire Department Open House yet, right? Because I checked my calendar to make sure my timing. We haven't had a meeting since, so that was awesome for folks who weren't able to go. 4,000 people attended. I went with my daughter, niece, three nieces and nephew, so I bumped into Connor, he's always my giggle children with me.
Face painting, hot commodity.
It was, the face painting was a thing, and they all sat and waited for that line to, to move through. My nephew is almost four, and he walked in, and there's people all around, and he turns to me and his mom, and he goes, "Where's the chief?" Like, he just wants to be the chief because he wants to be a firefighter and really big deal. But it was, it was just amazing, from all the demonstrations to the hands-on experience with the kids, the attempts to dunk the deputies. It was just, it was quite the party, so a great way.
I always dunked the deputies.
The line was insane.
I've never, I've never seen the chief so happy.
Everyone was laughing and smiling. My daughter took an attempt. She actually knows Deputy Carol from field hockey. Her daughter plays with his daughter, and she proved that she's not a softball player but a field hockey player, and missed. But they were just, it was great, the really positive energy. I talked to Michelle briefly. She said they ran out of food way earlier than expected, and just, you know, the scale of it, I think everyone was shocked how, how filled it was, but great day. I know you were there, and you were there. I didn't get to see you guys because it was so crazy, but just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to the Fire Department and the Police Department for a really, really well-run program, and DPW for all the work they put into it and everyone else. I know it was a big team effort, so.
Yep. I'm sorry to have missed it, but it's always a great, great event every year, and you had wonderful weather for it, too.
And the chief said that the families were lined up outside 20 minutes before they even opened the doors, and it was, it was quite something to see.
It was. The road closure was huge, too.
Oh, yeah.
That was awesome.
Played a big role. I think it alleviated a lot of concern for folks with little ones that didn't have to worry about them coming and interfering with traffic, so it was great.
Yeah, you're right. The chiefs were very pleased, but in fact, one of the chiefs actually got to knock the deputy in before the even kids got a chance to throw the ball. So, that was, yeah. But that was very impressive. And yesterday's NRT was very impressive. The turnout, the weather was gorgeous, and there were a lot of people from outside of Easton who came, wanted to learn about Easton, which I thought was kind of interesting. But it was, it was, it was a pleasure being with Jamie and being able to talk to people as they came up with. I thought we made a great team and provided a lot of good education. Kristen Kennedy gave me packages of COVID tests, good for till June of '25. I think we ended up with, I think I ended up with bringing, I'm gonna bring four back out of all of them. That was a big seller for free, that people wanted to grab it, so.
Thank you, Craig. And Dottie, one other thing, just on the Fire Department, because Chief Alexander would really appreciate if we mentioned the demonstration that was going on there, where they showed the difference of having your bedroom room closed, the door closed, versus a fire making it through the hallway and into an open bedroom, and how quickly, how many more minutes of time, which is critical, right? That's life and death for the Fire Department to be able to get there and-
Good point.
Have a successful, you know, rescue versus the amount of time it takes to overwhelm a bedroom. So, not only did they demonstrate it live while everyone was there, they are also, I think, videoed another one this past Thursday for ECAT, and they're hoping that will take off and become viral so that that communication can get out to folks of the fact that it can save a life to close the bedroom door when you go to bed at night. And I know not easy for all of us who are parents and have little ones, and you're either trying to listen through the walls, or you don't sleep anyway, but just food for thought because I had no idea until I saw the live demonstration, and the Fire Department was unbelievable in putting that on because it was not easy to coordinate that, have everyone be safe while they also showed how dramatically different it is on both sides.
That's great. I appreciate you mentioning that. He did talk about that at the last meeting that we were at, and I think he would appreciate you sharing that again. So, thanks, Jamie.
You bet.
All right, well, if that is it, we are going to go into an executive session under purpose six of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to consider the purchase-exchange-lease or value of real property of land situated at 388 Depot Street. And that is because the Chair declares that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So, we're gonna take a motion, a second, a roll call vote to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. So, this will be the conclusion of the meeting. I ask this every time. We don't have to do a motion to adjourn afterwards, do we?
No, if your motion made clear you're not returning to open session, you were fine.
So, I move to go into executive, executive session, not to return to open meeting.
Second.
That's Barger and Stacy.
A roll call for executive session. Stebbins, yes?
Stacy, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. We're not used to a big crowd, and this is really nice, especially a young, a young crowd of cheering section back there. And I want to thank ECAT as always for doing such a great job broadcasting.